Yes ma'am, please.
All right, Neva.
That's me.
Karen here. Alexander.
Here.
Cassandra.
Here.
Uh, Conley? And Debbie?
Hi.
Allison? Cheryl.
Here.
Kristen.
Here.
Did you have to think about that? I'm not quite sure. Some days I'm like. Okay, some days it's just.
Yeah.
Next one?
I'm just too lazy physically.
All right, we're gonna give the approval of the agenda, I just need a motion to approve the agenda, you can see there's only one thing on there, um, that's just the discussion of, uh, playground.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Exactly.
Andrew?
I will second.
Perfect.
I'll second.
And as an admittance, um, that was my first time taking notes or minutes in a long time and I, I realized, um, that it stopped at six forty. My other minutes, um, are unaccounted for, but they did happen.
Do you have a copy of the minutes?
We'll have those on the regular.
On the regular, okay, that's what I thought. That's what I didn't even need to have.
Thank you.
No, you're fine, I was like, don't think so, just tell them we don't have them. So then we have all business, obviously that was a playground cover discussion, that's what we're covering, that's what this meeting is about, so technically it's not new business, it's just finalizing.
So I would recommend approval of agenda with striking items four, six, seven, and eight.
Okay.
You can do that.
Just on for a turn, Conley.
But you guys have to do that, not me.
Yeah, so we just need to make a motion, uh, to approve the agenda, striking out, uh, numbers four, six, seven, but we all have to do eight, cause it's your turn now.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
No, eight. We want eight.
Uh, make a motion to strike four, six, and seven from the agenda.
With the approval of the agenda?
With approval of the agenda.
I second that.
So that one is a. Is that a second or? And Cassian? Not eight.
We don't wanna say.
We don't wanna say.
I wanna go home.
My child's already crying at the house, so I don't need to add more. All right, perfect. Um, since we struck out the duly minutes, obviously since we don't have them, all we have is number five, which is the whole business bringing up the playground equipment discussion. So our main goal, uh, for tonight is to decide between these two, I'd like us to try to be, um, as efficient as we can in doing that, so if you have extra questions that need to go over, um, first, we can absolutely do that. Um, if you didn't get, if you didn't understand something apart from the questions and stuff that got asked, um, we can answer those. And I would like to try to end tonight by having a, um, choice made between the two. Um, I did go back and I've been looking back through the, um, previous plan and then also from the stuff when they did the survey and all of that. And one thing I did actually notice in that was that people actually weren't focused on the playground equipment as much as we are, uh, actually focused on the playground equipment. Um, so while I do think that that feels like something that we're having to move forward really quickly because of wanting to get the funds and stuff done, um, it didn't feel like when the priorities went through and looking at the things that people had voted on in that, or even had mentioned or talked to, talked about, I said, I'm, I voted on, but had submitted the survey, it was more the overall upkeep of the park, um, the different areas, uh, the maintenance in the pond, the maintenance of the things that are already there, some of these we're already kind of tackling as we go. So my hope is that once we have this part decided, that we can start focusing more on those other areas, and I started highlighting some, so our next meeting I'll bring some of those with me, some things that I pointed out, um, and it prints out of the plan too, so we can work with that, uh, together as well. Does that make sense? Okay. Did anybody have any questions, more questions about some of the stuff that we got back that you felt like didn't get answered?
I did not see in this one, and I looked really quick on my phone, and I'm looking for it now, but I didn't see a zip line.
They did not include a zip line on there, they can't. So what they did for us is this is a really preliminary, cause the whole thing that they do is they come out and they need the community to do the design. Because I talked to him and expressed the fact that we had some concerns about not knowing what we would be getting for the budget, he put together a really quick preliminary, like, well, British, he put, it took him a week, but he put together a quick, like, this is what we could get for, but that doesn't mean that this is in any way finalized, I actually hadn't thought that, like, we could switch out one of the extra swings that included the zip line there instead, was like my initial thought, but it's absolutely doable.
Okay.
Uh, this is, and like, when they come out and if we choose them and they come out, some of this would change anyway, because they're gonna incorporate what the community and what the kids say, he just wanted to give us a taste of, this is kind of what is within our about half a million dollar budget, like, area that we had kind of been playing with, it could be less than that, we could, we're spending more than that, like, but he just wanted to give us a taste of what is.
Okay.
What they can do.
Mm-hmm.
So, yes, I also noticed the missing zip line, it's like.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
But, no.
Okay.
And it is not like, and like, where he puts stuff is not, like, we could move it around, we can move it, like, to be over here instead of down there.
Right.
Like, there's, it's just, yeah, he just wanted to give us an idea, since he knew that that was kind of a point of.
Okay.
Difficulty, awesome.
Okay. All right, gotcha.
And there were, um, three questions that were asked, um, by me, I mean, not by me, by you guys, for me to ask Recreation Installations. And I do possess those answers. Um, one of them was about the warranty and, um, so every, um, everything has a different type of, of warranty, um, when it comes to like installation, um, whether it be, so something that was done by man or, um, so vandalism and, um, done by man is in, as, as an installation, but the things also done by man, like, uh, vandalism, things like that, those are things that we have to take care of on our own time. But, um, she gave me a link and maybe it's in here, um, or maybe it'll be at our official, official meeting next time, um, about the warranty and then, um, another one was if they would be willing to work side by side, um, or just with another company, um, and to an extent, they, they would, um, like, if it's excavation, um, I mean, typically they have everything covered by, um, by the company, but, uh, it would just, like, if it was someone putting in the water fountain, or they just, it can't interfere with their safety guidelines and anything t- um, to do with their structure, so. And that third one, um, will come to me and I'll let you know when it does.
Um, was it about the funds? Or building in s- in sections, I can't remember which ones.
No. Nope.
I can't remember, there's some. That's wasn't my, uh, my notion.
Oh, just, I have to. Look at you, God. Um, and look at you, Neva.
Extra, yeah, extra fees costly.
Yes, it was extra fees for funds, um, and so this is, just like Cassie, uh, said, it's like, these are the preliminary figures, um, and they would require fifty percent, um, should I be saying this for like a next question?
No, you have another question.
Okay.
I know, we're gonna ask that, so.
Um, yeah, the preliminary figures, um, given we get, get our communication back to them and see, you know, what else we want, um, changed or this, uh, I had Matt print out the sandstone and, um, so it's different than the design that I brought in July, um, so this would be the corrected, um, correct col- colors that, um, we were shooting for and, um, yes, they would require fifty percent down to start and another question was install time, actually, and, um, four to six weeks, we leave that, but we, upon putting in our order, um, it will take eight to twelve weeks for them to acquire the imagery, so she, we talked about it and say we had our order put in, um, January, for, the first of January, for example, our park, we could expect it to be, um, given the winter weather and anything like that, um, it would be ready to go by springtime, so April, um, yeah. So, um, everything depends on, I mean, everything's about time, timely, if we have our order put in, whatever, the sooner, um, things, the ball gets rolling on that. But yeah, so I have a link for the warranties, um, that about the install time and then additional, um, fees, that's, that's all included, um, with their, with their numbers on the, um, last quote, uh, quote they had.
Kristen, I didn't remember, on your quote from last time, um, it included the Ford and Place flooring, but did that include them doing the groundwork, or is that something we would have to get down with the?
Yeah.
Okay, so they would come and do everything?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, um.
I just don't remember if that's what they would do.
I believe so, I, like, and they would coordinate the, the pebble rock being removed and, um, she takes care of all of that.
That kind of surprises me, based on the numbers that, um, that I was given for Ford and Place, cause they said it costs about twenty to forty dollars per square foot, and so I don't know that those.
Your comp- that company's also based out of New York?
That doesn't mean they get their supplies out of New York, but no, he said, like, for, cause they do playgrounds all over the world, and so he said, like, based on where they, and they, they've done playgrounds several in Kansas, but he just said typically, like, the Ford and Place costs about twenty to forty dollars per square foot, and with the square footage that we have, I'm just, was just curious if those numbers matched up with actually having to pull everything else out too, that's why I should know if you had clarified that.
Uh, we also need to give her a design, cause if we, if we do want, um, turtles incorporated with the artwork on the Ford and Place, um, that, that might affect it, um, but they, they know that they're not the only company being looked at, so I think that they're being, I mean, probably thinking competitively as well and.
But I was just curious.
Yeah, no, that's a good question.
For sure. Um, on that note, um, the guy that I talked to did say that, um, Earthskate, when I actually brought up the engineered wood fiber.
Yeah.
I mean, he actually recommended if we're trying to stay within a particular budget, that we do that first, rather than doing the Ford and Place, because of the extreme cost of the Ford and Place, that it is, he said it's a good place for, if you don't want to have to output a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars just on surfacing initially, that the engineered, uh, wood fiber's a good place to start, because it only runs about two dollars a square foot versus the twenty to forty, depending where you are in the country, um, and so it's a tenth of the cost, and it can be just pulled back out and, like, you know, two years from now, we say, okay, we wanna put the Ford and Place in later, um, and that could be on either design, but I just thought that was something for us to consider moving forward, is that there's a fairly decent cost difference with those, so, and the, um, engineered wood fiber is still ADA, so.
So one thing we need to consider from the city's perspective is the pond is so close, that there's stormwater regulations and we can only have certain types of fill.
Yes, which would be something we would have to discuss.
And I think the, the wood and the re- reclaimed rubber were two that we could not have, and that's why there's a lot in there now.
We can't have. Okay, that, okay, that would've been something.
Now, Ford and Place would be okay, but it has to do with runoff and things that can get into the pond.
Yeah.
What's, eh, what's, eh, how do you spell Ford and Place? Is it like?
It's just a.
P I D.
Yeah, it's called.
It's Ford and Place, P I D.
Rubber. Oh, Ford and Place rubber?
Yeah. Okay, and that was, I figured was something we would need to discuss with.
Yeah, and I can check on that too to.
But. I just wanted to.
I talked to the Earthskate guy I mentioned upon, and he said supposedly the.
The wood.
The wood mulch is okay, but the rubber mulch is not okay.
Well. I would say it's wood, so I wouldn't have expected it to be a problem, just because this, it's wood.
Or maybe it just runs out so easily because of light, I can see that, I suppose.
Maybe. That's fair. But I just wanted to bring up that it might be a place, like, for either of them, that we could potentially save a little bit of cost.
A lot of it.
I know, he told me that, and I was like, what?
Yeah.
Yeah, everything I've seen before in Place is arranged from twelve to thirty dollars per square foot.
Yeah.
Uh, including installation, kind of just varies on size and stuff like that, the one thing to remember though is there, I think the playground that we had with, um, Play By Design is quite a bit bigger and in multiple areas compared to the other one, so that may be a little easier for them, because it's one, one area that we can't cover, uh, and just what's around maybe their equipment, was it the whole space or just basically in their equipment area? Do you remember?
For this design?
Yeah.
Yes, it's, um, but they are keeping in mind, um, about the swings, so just, um, so those can be moved, but, um, yeah, just in that. That area. And, uh, she, even though she hasn't seen it in person, she's like, what is that thing, uh, is that man-made? I was like, yes, I wish it was, like, our pyramid.
Of the hill.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that room.
Yeah.
The nerm.
The nerm.
The nerm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions about the ones in particular?
Uh, how soon for Play Design, Play By Design, could we get a person in?
So they are booked until November currently, so he said for timeline that they could be here in November to do the gathering, and then, um, he would recommend install in spring or early summer next year before it gets too hot.
Any concerns on prices changing for them to come in or?
I mean, that's gonna be either of them, if we, I mean, even with, with the other one, if we don't order, you know, till, we have, we have to wait till we have the money, and with, that's not till, you know, March, then they're no one, it's, since June, bleh, I don't know.
Are they all some fifty percent down?
Uh, no, they're not, um, so he didn't actually tell me that there was a down, so there's the cost to get them here. And then going, I don't think he said there was a down payment on that at all, it's going forward, we just are working with them to raise the funds into, and they help us, like, with fundraising and stuff.
So they would build it, build it before?
No, no, we have to pay them before they, like, we have to give them all of the, like, same with you, and they're not gonna build it before we have the money for the other one either.
For fifty percent down and then make, like, the other half.
Yeah.
When it's done.
On my completion, uh, I don't know if this is, we have to get them in before they start or before then, but considering it's a, you know, four day build, probably wouldn't be, there's not a huge difference.
Are you guys considering the volunteer build?
Four day.
That is what we discussed, that is their preference, um, but I did, I included the numbers in the email for both, for this particular design.
The.
That is, that is the way that Play By Design does most of their parks, is volunteer build. Yeah.
That's boring.
I found a part one that they just finished, um, in a little town that rehab, it's one, and also the one in Winfield, uh, at the, um, Island Park is done by Play By Design.
Yeah.
As well, and they did it as a volunteer build, um, but, yeah, Winfield's, um, Island Park is just along north end of town, um, the one that I, that I was following, kind of through their Facebook, to kind of get an idea, to gauge timeline on stuff for the, they would be similar to where we are now, they started their design process in the fall, and then they kept having events, things like that, to talk about and to get the excitement up for the volunteers. Um, and then did some pre-building, actually, before, when it was still colder, in some, um, warehouse spaces that they had, so that when they actually came to time to install, a lot of the stuff was actually pre-built before it got hot outside, which I thought was a great idea, cause then you do, like, these people during the winter hours, when people don't have as much outdoor stuff to do, as opposed to spring, and they're like, ah, it's finally, we can come out now. Um, and then they had four, four or six, I think, dedicated days that people would come out and build, and then one was like a week long build, that they had the P B, uh, D people there, and then they had regular workers, um, they even had, like, kids, like, little kids come in and build product, that looked pretty cool.
Oh, yeah, they would.
As well. Say again.
How's that warranty?
It's, well, they actually have certified people there who are, who are supervising everything, so you're not just, they're not just like, here's the plans, you guys.
Oh, yeah, they have at least.
They send, they send their own engineers and people to come help with the build, uh, which is built into the cost of it, which that part, cause I was the same way, I was like, well, I, I remember there being people.
Yeah.
Um, but they did, they sent them out and they went through everything with them, um, as far as that goes, so that was interesting to see, and the same, I kind of went back and looked at, um, this group's, some of their other builds that I could find, um, obviously they do all the whole install themselves, so theirs is usually fairly quick, um, I am still kind of, I feel sort of like they're kind of six one half does the other, depending on how we're looking at it, one concern that I have for this one in particular is I'm worried about the access to the middle space for adults to go and act with kiddos, um.
I, um, so it's, uh, completely open, I asked her, um, it's, it's considered true ADA because of all the ramps.
Yeah.
And I don't.
I was trying to find another spot that there was access just to get in there without climbing up or down something, and I couldn't find it.
I mean, you can do that around, I don't know if this is the giant pogo stick I'm looking at, or on the third page. But, um.
That would probably stand.
I imagine it's, I mean, it, it can't. It, you have to be able to get in there as a grown-up, because.
Yeah.
That's, that wouldn't. And if you have the design, um, from last time, it kind of, it does show you a few more open areas, um, from last month, it's, which is, it's the same design, it just has this one's in color, this.
I see what the, the pogo stick thing you're talking about, when you walk further, if you look at the very first one, uh, when you walk further, then you encounter the bridge there.
Yeah.
Two, so that was kind of, I think, that, that middle section on that very first page, there's not really a way to get in there without climbing, that I could see going under.
Do you see?
Yeah, cause this, to this piece right here, to me, looks like it's this piece right here, so yeah, you can walk into this space, but then as soon as I'm in here, I'm sorry, this space, as soon as I'm in here, I'm gonna hit more, there's all, there are only bridges that are all the way around this space, there's no open place for me to get in the middle of this section, I guess, is my thing. I don't know if I'm looking at it wrong, but I did, it was on the other one too, because that's actually the one I first posted on.
Cause what I see on, this is the well, actually, that's a huge opening right there too.
Yeah, it's an outside opening, it's just into that interior part, that's the one I'm not seeing an opening for.
Maybe it's an estatal heart here.
Yeah.
By your way out.
Well, and actually what made me think about it is I was at the Sager County Park with my kiddos, and my daughter got into that middle place in the one, and I couldn't get, I mean, I couldn't quickly get down in there, I could get down in there, but.
It was challenging.
It was hard to get in.
At Sager County Park, there's like an area that, like, you have to go under other pieces to get to it.
See, I'm really weak.
Which applies, yeah.
And then it becomes harder if you have differently accessible parents who can't get in to get their kiddo.
They have really accessible parents, I can barely.
But that, but, and you, like, even like, for me, like, I can't, my back doesn't feel like that anymore. Um, so that was it, and I don't know how much of that, I would imagine they have a way of us, you know, maneuvering that around when the build happens to, to avoid that, I shouldn't see it in either of the designs, that's why I had asked.
Yeah, uh, that is odd, and I will ask her about that if. Cause it's, I guess, there's no way you have to.
This is the same one right here.
Oh, yeah.
Solid.
This.
This right here.
There's less of a middle one.
Yeah, see, there's.
It's all connected.
That's not like.
Yeah.
Yeah. It would actually be, so with, um, altering it, it might.
I feel like. More for like. These little walkways here.
Well, that's not a lot for toddlers.
Yeah.
For this, there wasn't a lot of little. Was there, were they thinking to do a separate, separate structure for little kids, or they were hoping that this, this would integrate the little kids with the bigger kids?
Uh, no, this is supposed to be, uh, two to five and then six to, six and a half. And the, there are tiny str- so there is a climbing turtle.
Mm-hmm.
That, um, could just, could just be set aside, but I have a feeling that turtles would just climb on it and no one would ever get to use it, because anyone's seen the park recently, we're a little over complicated. I believe Kechai.
I'm just gonna say, if it's, if it's angling season, you'll see them out more.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
In the, in the grass.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they'll come at my yard too, so.
Yeah. We just have a lot of frogs.
Really?
We have some frogs. Tree. I know, there's so much frogs.
So, um, on cost to point out with Play By Design, when I went back through Cassie's email, it had looked like the, the design time for them coming in was gonna cost fifteen hundred plus whatever the.
So it's fifteen hundred dollars is the cost, and then we have to pay transportation, uh, room and board, and then like a rental car for them to get places, they did say they accept, like, if we have someone who wants to donate an Airbnb or hotel room, they've done a sign, they don't care how we, like, cover that part of it.
Yeah.
But, um, that, yeah, it's about twenty-five hundred dollars estimate, is what he said.
And they each had to have their own, remember their own bathroom, I think.
Um, yeah, and most likely when they have the initial designer come, that's not a big deal, because it's typically just one person, though, and he's very invested, so the owner might come, because he's all like, I wanna design turtle things, um, but, so, I don't know, but, bleh, when they come to install, it's, it's four people, and they do have to have their own bedroom and bathroom, because, as he put it, they stink at the end of the day.
Wait, and it's not tied to their space?
Yes, so. And I did want to address the cons, there was some concern, like, about the community building stuff, and he did say Kansas is his absolute favorite state to come build in, because of the community support that they get, because people, like, come in droves, um, he said that the Augusta build was just crazy, the number of people that they had that came out to build, um, I also have contact information for the two women that were in charge of the Augusta build, um, I communicated with one of them so far, she's currently in Ireland. Um, and she also, um, works in the state senate, state representative's office, something like that, and she was like, oh, yeah, I can talk to the state senator, and we can see if there are any, like, state funds we can, I was like, huh, what?
Hmm.
Yeah, cool, let's be friends.
Spitty funds. Got an extra state fund.
But she was more than happy to help with questions about fundraising and anything else that we need, and I mean, they also offered if we need them, if we would like anyone to come talk to the whole board, that they would be more than happy to come talk to us as a whole.
I think my, and I wanna hear Beal's opinion on this too, which is why I'm gonna volunteer to go first and throw my neck out there for this one, I think after reading through, um, the survey more, um, and looking kind of through all of that, and kind of trying to see priority-wise of how stuff is, and our desire, cause one of the things really was that they had even input was, they really wanted community involvement directly in with the park, they, well, some of the things that they pointed out specifically were that they wanted volunteerism to start occurring more in that space, um, and I think we start that right with the park board, and then now we're starting with the volunteer days and things like that, so I think the more that we supply the expectation that this is our park, and we need to be putting more into it, um, the more that we're gonna get that following to, to have that happen, um, and Kechai isn't just like Kechai proper, right, we're pretty big, we have people from outer, outer areas that are coming in here, we have lots of apartments, we have some new development that's happening, and I'd be interested in seeing if some of them wanted to come in and help with some of that, as, you know, we were part of this build, we're part of your community, that, that's a pretty big ask of them, um, and in return for us, you know, doing, redoing this area to draw more people in for the things that you're building these houses for, um, so I think that there's lots of area for that, and I think the more that I looked at it, the more that, cause I was, I was torn, I didn't know, did we want something faster, or do we want something more community-based, and I feel like after reading all that, that it's a community-based thing, is what people are really wanting, is to be a part of it and to have it be unique and be a focal point and be well taken care of, um, less on the immediate side of it, and it felt like, it did really feel like to me though, initially before I went through all of that, that we need to get it done, 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 but I think what actually has to get done, 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 from my perspective, is we need to have a builder, and we need to have a plant, and we need to have a budget that we can present, the actual thing itself, if that doesn't happen till the summer, is okay, um, as long as it's becoming a community function, uh, like, that was what I kind of felt after reading through a lot of that, um, and then kind of went back through the Facebook page too, anytime. Um, and then kind of went back through the Facebook page too, anytime a park is mentioned, just kind of seeing, um, anything that was on there, and a lot of times. When, even when people have commented on those other parks, what people had commented was, it's so unique to us. You're never going anywhere else to find a park that looks like this. They may have these elements, but it's never gonna look like this, and I think that we stand very firm on our, um, desire to want to be one of a kind. In Kechai, we're an art-based city. Um, and if that's gonna be how we look, then we don't wanna have stuff, I feel like, I would lean more towards Play by Design, because I want it to be unique. Uh, and I'd want our community to have to be involved with it to make it happen, so that we keep that buy-in moving forward. So, I think that's my vote, just based off of that. Um, I would love to hear you all and, and what your thoughts on that, and then what you think your choice would be, unless you have other, or you can ask other questions and stuff too, but. Um, that's kind of how I'm feeling about it right now.
Yeah, I agree, I, I was kind of heavily looking at more of a, thinking that it was. You know, we were looking at budget, we were looking at getting some, you know, quickly and that kind of thing. But, looking at more along the lines of, really how is it going to fit within the community? Um, you know, and, and, um, from a, from a, you know. An eclectic community that we have, you know, and how we can, this to me looks like, I mean, we could even have. More of a, I know that there could be like a little art park, supposedly with the new, um, you know, Jeff Kingworths. Of the build, the build over there, you know.
Yeah, at Turtle Creek. What is it?
Little, there's maybe an art, art, art park, with art, so people.
I don't really know, we can walk around it and look at little, it's like sculptures.
Oh, is that a way?
No, it's part of the plan, it's part of the plan.
When they, when they build it, right, and, and the, you're, you're gonna have like a little, you know, your shops there. And then, one of the things that, that the community wanted was a little art park. Right, which is art, so you can sit there and drink your coffee or whatever, right? So, anyway. Uh, so, you know, a- anyway, this was, this, this is gonna fit, uh, much better with this. In my, just in my opinion, right? So, I'm gonna have to, and it, whatever it is, I mean, we, it's gonna fit to our budget.
Yeah, cause our budget is what we tell them, kids.
That's right, so, there you go.
So, the same people that will be building it have to come up with the money for it as well?
No, but they would assist us in the, so their, most, all their stuff is, uh, a community.
You talk about the community, they're people.
Like, um, from what I'm understanding, they help us identify ways to raise the money for a lot of it. And from what I saw with the, some of the answers, they were saying it's, it's almost fifty percent or more that they get.
Yeah, um, he, yeah, so he said that like a lot of communities almost entirely fund it, like by, just by donations and stuff. But, um, like I know for a fact that, um, Augusta's, they raised over fifty percent, was a public raise. Either from corporations and businesses within the community, or from the community members themselves. And they did fundraisers, and they did different activities to, to do that, but, yes, it was.
They're a lot, they're good town, they have more than a jump start.
Right.
They do have a jump start.
They think the thing is like more in that, I would say that Play by Design has been doing this for so long that they have worked in all types of communities. So, they know bigger and smaller ones, and that, when I was reading through a lot of it, that's kind of what I, the gist that I was getting from it, from all the ones that I saw. That there were some that have a lot of smaller communities, like, Winfield doesn't have giant corporations, not really within it. Um, I would say again, it's gonna, it's gonna rely on us, but we also still have funds that can come from the city. We can talk to the representatives, stuff like that. I'm actually really less worried about that, because is this something that's directly going to benefit our community that I think that we have. We could get the buy-in for that a lot easier, I feel like, than we would for other things, um, going around. But again, it's, it's one of those things that we just, we have to work at, and I think we're gonna get out of it, whatever we put into it, is still gonna be the big part of it, and that's just gonna take a lot from us too.
Have you, um, I mean, I would ask the same questions that I asked, um, how it's warranted, how.
All of that information was in the email I sent.
Okay. You were, kind of talked to it, um.
Yeah, I asked all the same, the, I had the same list of questions, and I sent them back out to everybody.
Um, it said, for the upkeep was pretty minimal because of how it's built, um, often there, um. They, they didn't say no to the painting part, um, yeah, so it's like.
Yeah, so it is, but if there are specific elements that we want to be specific colors, they can make that happen. It's just because of the, the plastic material, it just doesn't hold paint, like, the way that you would want it to if you were intentionally doing it.
I'm with whatever the community's with, I will say, um, for the first probably, what, four meetings. Um, that it was, I mean, ADA, 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 has to be all accessible, ADA, has to be.
Yeah, yes. Everything about Play by Design is accessible.
That is, you know, the monkey bars and the slides.
They actually, if you look in the components list, they have, um, high-low monkey bars, so they have ones that are low enough for kids with wheelchairs to do.
Do they have anything for able-bodied kids?
And they have regular monkey bars as well, they have climbing walls, fire poles, steppers, they combine it. So, there's a certain level that has to be met in order for it to be considered ADA, like a certain. Yeah, so there has to be a certain number of elements that are accessible to be considered ADA, and they, oh, they always exceed that number in their builds.
Okay.
So.
Cause, um, that's what I, that's the only reason that I, uh, chose the Tallgrass Prairie design. Cause it's truly, um, ADA, um, but they, there are a ton, a ton of, um. Options as well, so, if, if things don't, um, maybe work out with. I mean, it's always good to know that there's other options and.
Yep, yes.
And it's definitely like the ramps and stuff connecting also help with a lot of that, like you were saying, just to make it very cohesive. Um, as far as that was concerned, I feel like they're, they're very even on that end of things.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Yeah, there's, I liked the triple balance, that was fun.
And, um, I definitely would have asked about going into the other areas if. Um, if I knew that.
I think mine is, my, my concern is less just about the, um, the space or even the design itself, because I think that, again, that's all the stuff that you can customize. Mine is more, again, I, I want us, I feel like what, what Kechai was wanting through that survey was something that was unique to us. And I don't know how unique to us in this A, one that you kind of just choose from a few that they already have, that they may have built in other places, would be for that.
Isn't that what this is too though, with Play by Design?
They have the, like, you have like the high and low and things like that, but you're creating the whole design, like, they take that from the community itself.
Yeah, they don't, they don't make buildings they aren't twice.
Yeah, it would be a lot different than a structured playground. So, I feel like there's just more, um, places that we're able to customize it to the point where it would be exactly for us, I guess.
I love the million dollar dreams, I live in.
Well, there's, it doesn't have to be a million dollar society.
This company was nice because they were so transparent about everything, and they gave us so much information upfront.
Yeah.
But then, I feel like at the end of the day, this is more of like. A small town, artistic town park versus like.
Yeah.
A Baptist church playground, yes.
Well, and it, and it is, it is very easy for them to be a prime, that's, I like that, so I like knowing all the numbers, but I think it is because again, they build the same thing consistently. So, they do know what that's gonna be like, Play by Design's not gonna be able to give us and say it's gonna be exactly this amount of money. Because we built it here and it's something that cost us, and I think that's kind of the, the difference as far as knowing how much the cost is.
Yeah, I like the homemade book.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Imagine and remember a little fall festival at the park with apple cider, and everybody's telling us, look at all the parties.
This party planner committee are here.
So, I, I might, my vote kind of lands the same. And from the beginning, my thought has been that we are getting all of this new stuff, especially the stuff that's going to be on all over the shops in the housing area. And, um, I know like with my kids, we're willing to drive to, we drove to Augusta to go to a unique park. And I think that in, in spirit of that with the community, is having a park that will draw people out of town, will draw, draw people out of Wichita. Is ultimately just gonna be a positive for Kechai, because people are gonna come to the park and then walk over to the new coffee shop and get some coffee or have lunch. I don't know what else is gonna be in there, but you know, there's, it's gonna draw people and hopefully increase the, the traffic and be a part of that for the whole community. Plus, the moms are just gonna really like being able to get their coffee and then go do some, do some park play.
And I will say, we, I accidentally drove by the Augusta park, I didn't actually know where it was, my son does therapy in Augusta. Um, and I accidentally drove by it, and all three of my oldest kids immediately slammed against the window, and were like, look, look at that, so it looks like cattle, it's all set. And I was like, oh, there's that park, I, and I really was just focusing on where I was going. Uh, and I didn't even know it was there, and then they were just so excited about it, but I know we, we pass parks all the time, and I've never had them react that way. Um, and that's actually what made me go, oh, I wonder, and I went and looked more about that one and the other one, I, I really feel like that's kind of. Those two things, having gone back and read the rest of the stuff in the survey and that, is kind of what got me, so.
I just think for who Kechai is as a community, that, to me, this is what fits our community instead of having. And there's nothing wrong with generic players, like you love them.
Oh, no, I mean, that's, but that's the thing, if we didn't, I don't think it did, but here's.
Party last week, and it's, I mean, it's not a big deal.
I don't think it is, because I, I really do think that if you hadn't put the time into finding information about this. We would not have had an idea of how to even compare it to, or even understand what, what that meant, right?
I worked with the information I was given.
Right, but that's the thing, like, and, and not to, and that's the thing, but don't discredit what you did though, because it did take a lot of work, and. It's, the thing is, like, I was equally like split that whole time, and I think that us understanding this and what it really looked like, and all the things that you were talking about. Helped understand the other pieces as well.
Equally split, so is that all wood?
It's composite.
Right.
Right? I was gonna, do you wanna?
I think the one that, the earth scape was.
I mean, I'm very much gonna echo the last couple of thoughts, my biggest concern with Play by Design was just the timeliness of it. And just, um, who, because I was a bit concerned about not having the initial idea and only having the idea of a community game.
Sure, yeah.
Probably see what that was.
Just having that compared to the, the layout of the other one, which is like, if it was just on timeliness, I would probably choose.
Yeah.
That one, but if what our goal is to make a park that is uniquely our own. And is to make the best park that we can, I would have to go with Play by Design.
I'm just gonna make a comment, a, a observation, when you talked about timelines. Um, it was eight to twelve weeks to acquire parts by, um, recreation installations. That's two to three months, and then another month to, so it's like spring, it's still gonna be spring.
It's a five month.
It's still gonna be spring, so even Play by Design, it's still gonna be spring, so, I don't, I don't know if it's gonna be any different.
Yeah, I, that was something I had wrote down too, up here, we talked about the, the timing of it would be fairly similar, maybe a few months, but it's not gonna be like a year difference. It's gotta be six months difference, it might be three to four months difference.
Well, that depends on how, how fast we raise money.
Yeah.
We're also not an honest community unfortunately, so, that manpower, I feel like.
Well, I think you'd be surprised, we have a lot of people in our community who go out and work in lots of areas, um, we have, we have lots of farmers and. People like that, that go out of our community to supply work, um, and see, and so when I say too, that we want, when I'm. My vision for this and going forward, who I'm gonna be asking for, for help, is gonna also be those builders. It's gonna be the other people who are coming in and wanting to be a part of this community, so, I'm gonna go and talk to Moxie, I'm gonna go talk to, I would want us to go have those conversations with them and say, hey. You're coming to the community, we're supporting you by doing this, I need you to figure out how you're gonna support the community as well. And this is a project that we're working on, I need you to help me with these things, you know, you've got some big equipment over here, we don't have access to that as a community. Can you bring that over and dig all that rock out for us, can you do these things? So, some of that, my thought process would be, if we can start working on that, um, and that's what I'm talking about too, when they're saying some companies donating things. It's what local companies are in your community, not necessarily have stuff here, because we do have some other companies and things like that are around. We have, um, other groups that we can get out, like Textron has giant groups of volunteers, I work with them all the time, that'll come out and do stuff with us.
There's like Textron, Moors.
Right, cause you don't forget, we're in the county, right, so they're still in the same county as we are, they still could come up here with their kiddos, just like we could go to Augusta. And utilize those spaces too, so, talking about our community expanding and wanting us to be, you know, in a bigger area to support all this, I think is not asking too much of a penny one. To do that. Um, I mean, I'll give my five-year-old a hammer any day, can't guarantee anything great's coming out of it.
Good thing they're gonna check it.
Yeah, good thing they're del taking all of it, um, Collie, did you have a chance to?
First aid kit?
I'm gonna get some nurses.
Did you feel like you had a chance to?
Yeah, 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 yeah. I appreciate all the work that you, I appreciate it, one of the best.
Well, the chances are he.
I know, and buddy wasn't an issue, Collie would have worn hands down.
Hands down.
Well, I think what's funny is, I always tell my wife, like, I, I am not really good at picking something, like, being like, I want this. I'm really good at saying, I, give me a listen, like, I don't want that, I don't want that, I don't want that, and I can narrow it down and we can pick out of that. But I'm so bad and decisive picking favorite things that I'm not really, but this is my top three, right here. So, I think that that, if we hadn't had that with you all and your three personalities, and what you liked, and what you were looking at. There's no way that we would ever come to finding something like this or having a death sentence or.
Yeah, to quote myself from our very first meeting, we, we need anything designed of quality, go be Collie.
Okay, is there anybody who felt like they didn't have a chance to, I did text Debbie, I said, gotten anything back, just to see if she had anything.
And he said he can work on something if we want him to, so.
I do want more, uh, harmony bells.
Ooh, yeah.
Harmony bells, yeah.
Oh, yeah, the harmony bells, yeah, that's, they have the whole music section.
Yeah, so here's what I wanna do, I wanna, just to make sure that we are all perfectly, um.
Aligned.
Aligned, and I, I wanted to move an actual build, because I feel like that's necessary, uh, so we have something written down, um.
So, on this pitch, if you want this one.
That sounds horrible, um, thank you, I was, I was somebody who has the music that, my ears tingled just with the thought of it. None of my children are musically inclined, and it makes me sad to this day. Um, so then, uh, we can call a vote, uh, would it, Karen, do you feel like it'd be easier to say, this is who we're gonna go with? If you agree yes or no, or it'd be easier to say, who would you like to go with and then allow for?
Um, you could do a motion, one person could do a motion that I, I move that we, uh, move forward with Play by Sign or.
I got some emotion for you.
And someone's tapping. And then you all vote, or you can do a, a one-by-one vote, which is, sometimes we do at council as well.
I feel like this will be fairly easy to do it that way, would somebody be okay making the motion to move forward with Play by Design?
I'll make a motion that we move forward with Play by Design. I started.
Okay, uh, all in favor, yea?
Yea.
Yea?
Yea.
Half-hearted yea, that's okay. All right, any opposed? Okay, and Debbie's not here, so she has the vote, uh, in the care of stains. Okay, so we have a yea before Play by Design, so, uh, it seems like what the next step would be, would be to get with them.
Oh, he texted me while we were talking.
Imagine that, uh, he knows already, so, to get with them and to start moving forward on the planning meeting.
Okay.
Um, and then, I think we probably have to then discuss on how the payments and all of that will work, Matt as well, um.
Yeah, I'll get with you, Niva, we'll get Public Works involved and maybe set up a meeting, so.
And I do wanna cover, so.
Yeah, because Public Works can provide some of that.
Yes.
Labor, I'm not going to commit them to anything, because I don't know what their schedule is, but maybe removing the rock.
Yes.
Uh, different things like that, um, they can tell us what type of surface needs to be down, and different things.
And Debbie had asked about having Thomas at the meetings again, um, he's on vacation this week while we were making this decision. Um, as we, as we go forward, if we wanna have Thomas again, we can ask him, it's not a requirement of his job, and don't forget, he does work for our days. So, if we wanna have him, my request, just in order to honor his time, would be that we don't have, try to ask him to come to every meeting, but if we have. If we can get a group of questions that we want him to be here for, then maybe we can give him a specific meeting, like, hey, we need to know these things, and I'd like him to be here. But I don't, I don't want him to feel like we're wasting his time, like him sitting there waiting for us to ask him a question, um, just in case we don't have a meeting for him that day, I want, just like I'd wanna honor. Everybody else's time sitting here, um, so I think as we're moving forward, um, we'll see what questions we need to start asking him.
And a lot of those questions I can take to him and bring the answers back to him.
So that way if he wants to be here, cause that was another thing I said, if he wants to come in, he's always welcome, right? Um, but I just want him to feel like he has to come in, or that we're guilting him into coming, uh, he'd rather be in with his family than. Um, but I just want him to feel like he has to come in or that we're guilting him into coming. Uh, he'd rather be in with his family than with us, so. We'll definitely keep making him sort of move forward and, and keep him looped in as much as we possibly can through all of it as well. But, I think that is that we have a meeting, uh.
Next Monday is a holiday.
That is, not next, cause we had changed it though, right?
Yes.
We moved it to that fo- the following.
Okay.
The eighth?
The eighth. In the event of that, I will not be here for the next day then.
Okay.
Um, but if there is information that I need to have for you guys for the next meeting, I just need to know.
Yeah, if you send it to Matt.
Well, what, what do I need to get from Play by Design for the next meeting?
I'll work with Matt, we'll work with those stuff at the meeting. Right, so September eighth. And then we also have, we need to, I know I'm gonna put together some stuff for that, but for the volunteer day in September from twentieth. Uh-huh, which is gonna be the twentieth.
What, what was it again?
The September twentieth, which is a Saturday.
Eight, Tuesday. And I think my calendar is.
It's okay. So again, getting people back into that, the thought process, we volunteer there and all that, um, so Matt, I'll put that on my list too, have stuff to ask you by getting some to-do list stuff.
We probably, when do we wanna start putting that out for the community to know that?
I'm gonna work on it now and put it out there, cause it's about a month out.
Can we please call it Birmingham?
B- Birmingham?
Literally.
The Nirm.
Everything.
Nirming man.
Like I, I was wondering last time if there was a way for us to get it out other than just on.
Yes, I'm gonna ask if we can put it out, uh, with the letter that we put out with utilities
Okay.
as a reminder, um, as well, cause not everybody on the Facebook page, right, but everybody, everybody gets a utility bill.
Well, that's what I didn't know, if the newspaper would be able to do something.
They might be as well, yeah, we could, I don't know their next issue.
That's why I didn't, I don't know when it comes out. I just don't show them.
Can you remember when the?
It's too late, you've missed the September deadline.
Okay.
It's too late!
Cause then you should be getting the paper here right at the beginning, shame on you.
Okay, I thought I was.
I think it's too late. I mean, you could double check, but I think it probably is.
We can put it out there, and I think that if we, um, one of the things I might like to do too is try to, um, also get it out to some of our local churches as well as that they also start doing some bulletins and stuff like that for their members, so they'll be able to have that. And other community members to say. Um, I'm getting ready to let us go. I do have a slide question. Does anybody know what that school thing is up here and then how often it runs, that blue building?
It's a, it's a school.
Monastery?
It's a, it's a.
Oh, it's a priest, it's a monastery.
Okay, I've read some stuff about it, but I've never found any information on it.
It's like five hundred dollars.
I didn't think it was so expensive.
I thought, I didn't use it either, but I saw cards the other day and I was watching that. That was a slide question, sorry. Um, we just need a motion to adjourn, is anyone okay with?
I'll motion to adjourn.
I'm out, I took a shower, can we have a second?
I second.
Thank you.
Who's that?
Kristen. All right, perfect. Thanks everybody, I appreciate you taking an extra day out. Thanks.